Okay, it looks like we're ready to go. Well, we'll call this work session to order. Like I said, I lost my, my agenda, but first order businesses coronavirus update. Jay, you ready to kick that off?
I guess we've shared a fair amount with you via email over the last couple of days, but the governor's new order goes into effect on Sunday. We're still waiting for some interpretations on that. They put the governor out, which says stay at safe, safe at home instead of stay at home. Safe at home. We're waiting to see what that fully means. It looks like some of the businesses may be able to reopen with some fairly safe or some extensive safety protocols in place. It's a very slow rollout. I believe I shared with you the slides or with some of the slides of the, the modeling done. And basically what it's showing is that there's a requirement to keep at a 65% social distancing with a series of other measures in place, most likely through the end of the year. On the modeling coming from the governor's office. So how we adapt and how we deal with that, we shall see. There'll be some things reopen, but it's far from being in Georgia and folks thinking they can turn the switch on in Colorado. In general, we're looking at it being about two weeks behind Eagle County in terms of what we're seeing on the county health level, at least what we've heard over the last few days. Eagles a little bit of a ahead of us in terms of their control measures and where they're at. On the financial side, we will another few days wrap up the sales tax receipts for March coming in, in April. As we first entered this, I mean, obviously it really just hit us the last two weeks of March. We're going to see our sales tax receipts to be relatively flat or a slight increase over last year for March. Then we look at what's going to be probably a fairly significant drop off in April. So receipts in May. So we're monitoring that. But when things first broke loose on this in March, middle of March, folks were shopping quite a bit at City Market. We saw a significant uptick in significant uptick in groceries, booze, and to a certain extent marijuana as receipts for the town. Restaurants are going to continue to see a drop through March, probably in the 30 to 50% range, and then quite a bit in April. Lodging, significant downturn on the lodging side, obviously. So that's just kind of a, a quick overview. We continue to carefully manage the town's finances, but we haven't cut back. Yet we've held off part-time positions and seasonal and temp workers, but we have been fully filling full-time positions both in finance and the police department and our vegetation. Kind of tech that we brought on. So in the field, folks are pretty busy. Police department's doing well and we at this point don't have anyone out sick. We've had a couple of employees who've been out sick. Most of those have been returned and so things are continuing on the town service side. We're carefully watching our financial revenues and forecasts, but at this point we're not taking any drastic action, which is consistent with our discussions last week. As the county, county and state slowly open up some things, we will gauge on how that works for our rec facilities. I don't see rec center opening at any time while the schools are still closed. We just don't want to move kids concentrated from the schools over to the, to the rec center. Pool planning and that type of thing covers not off. We've done the interior work and we're just kind of waiting to see. But I can't imagine that'll be open anytime in the near future. Normally we take the cover off about now and start working on that. Right now it's going to be all on the inside. And some of the other rec facilities, we're just going to wait and see what the trends go for. We have not shut down the off-leash dog parks. We did have a discussion with the friends of the dogs parks and users to see if we thought there was issues there. At this point, folks seem to be behaving themselves rather well. So we have not, we've not changed that at all at, at this point. We are looking at isolating some of the picnic tables in because that's the spot where folks seem to be kind of gathering. So we might be relocating some picnic tables or tipping them up on their sides and make them inaccessible until things are released a little bit. So that's a quick update on the town operation side. And I'll let Dan talk a little bit on the, the task force and where that's, where that's heading and what's going on there.
Jay, just to clarify on the, on the governor's order. I mean, if I'm remembering correctly, I don't have anything in front of me, but essentially it means there's a few more businesses that are going to open and while we're, we're no longer going to be required to stay at home, we're strongly encouraged to stay at home, but for the most part, that's about it.
Yeah, we're, we're waiting to see kind of the interpretation of that order, which he has not put out yet. Usually the health department, the health department hasn't at the state level. So there should be some clarifications on some of the different businesses which aren't specific to the order. But yes, we are looking at that being not a whole lot of change at this point. And what we're hearing from is the the testing and the contact tracing and the funding for that is a, and the accessibility of that is, is a challenge. There's a rather robust debate at the state level right now between CCI, CML and the governor essentially on some of the CARES Act funding and what should come directly to municipalities and counties under 500,000. And all the health directors from every county have gotten together and said, you know, the majority of that money should be freed up to actually work on the health related issues and staff up for contact tracing and effective testing to be a little more on top of things as we're looking at a rollout. And so that, for lack of a better term, that battle rages right now at the state level of whether that funding is going to go.
Before I jump into task force stuff, does anybody have any questions? Is Jay just on his updates? No. Okay. Task force is moving right along. Looking at my notes right now or the notes and I'll just hit on a couple of highlights. Hopefully this week we'll be releasing, with respect to health, we'll be releasing basically it's kind of instructions on how to work through advanced directives for the layman. So if you've never done that, it can be daunting. There's power of attorney and do not resuscitate and all these other things. So it's really just a how to work through it. And really it's some local physicians who have wanted to, to get that information out is take, they're taking advantage of this opportunity. Not a lot changing on the, in terms of economic resources yet, but just so you know, we've been asked to advocate on behalf of businesses for, or to prevent insurance companies from denying claims. And Andrea is pretty informed. The Basalt Chamber of Commerce is really leading that. And you know, it's kind of a no brainer, but just so you know, we're planning to, to ramp up communications with respect to this new with the governor's order and what does that mean? To message that and we'll do that through, you know, K D and K through press releases, all that kind of good stuff. Human capital side, you know, the neighborhood heroes continue to do great work. Valley Meals and More continue to deliver more and more meals every day. Mary Kenyon's just a superhero. AARP donated $2,000 worth of masks for, yeah, $2,000 for masks for our seniors. We are hoping by the end of this week to have kind of an idea of when we can launch a true dashboard. That's been, it's been difficult to wrap our arms around and what the dashboard would look like. Where are we getting the data? How can we communicate that data? And our technology guys haven't really been able to focus on it too this week. So we're and meanwhile, other dashboards have come up. You know, in terms of cases and other things. So I'm hoping by next week we have a good idea of what that dashboard looks like. And again, that dashboard is just informing folks with this, in any situation, in, in any circumstance that we feel like we have good data. So it might be how many beds are available. It might be how many people have, have COVID. How many masks are being delivered, all that kind of good stuff. So we'll try and report on whatever we can do. I'll let Erica talk, talk about advocacy and fortunately not much to report on crisis response. So Erica, you want to talk about advocacy?
Sure. We haven't, I mean, Jay's been forwarding the emails from CML and kind of CCI and local leaders from our neighboring counties on this kind of discussion with the governor. And yeah, it's been, some of the emails have definitely been heated. And the funding that's been awarded to the state, how is that going to be distributed and the public health departments are really saying we need that funding for our local staffing and to step up testing. So we haven't decided to weigh in yet, yet. Jay's got a really good relationship with Garfield County. So we want to make sure that we're aligned with them and what they're requesting. So we, but we may decide that we should do a letter from the town, kind of backing them up or supporting them on that issue. And then the insurance issue that Jay mentioned. We just brought it up as Basalt had reached out to me to say, hey, we're working on this. And so Andrea Stewart is kind of leading that. And then we'll decide if we need to do a letter from the town or be better for his letter from the chamber representing businesses. So we'll, we'll see. I think that's it. Is there, I think that was it this last week, at least for stuff that came up in the advocacy realm.
Yep. And obviously food security is also part of that, but we'll talk about that after this update. So thoughts, questions, concerns? Marty?
Let me get unmuted here. Now on their advanced directive, are they using five wishes or are they just telling people how to fill out the paperwork?
You know, they, that's the path we started down Marty. And then I think some physicians, or I guess Valley View stopped using five wishes as their primary resource and they're using something else. And so I, I think we'll list five wishes as a, as a resource for someone, but the instructions are a little bit more generic.
So I know Valley View used to use five wishes. If you go in there, they'd ask you if you have an advanced directive. If you said no, they'd offer you five wishes. Okay. So that's something else. Second thing is, and this would apply probably to the food later on, but the chairman of the board of lift up said she would give me some numbers the end of the week about how much food is actually being distributed here in Carbondale. So we'll have that to look at if we don't, if the task force doesn't already have it.
I don't, I'm not privy to that, but I heard anecdotally that you know, last week they ran out. I understand part of that issue was because Basalt was sending folks to Carbondale. And so this on, yesterday they ramped up, prepared for 175 people, and I think they had food left over at the end of the day.
Yeah. Last Thursday I volunteered there. They had food for a hundred people or a hundred families. Basalt had run out and people were being told to come to Carbondale. And so there are about 15 people that didn't get it.
So
has matching funds right now.
Marty, we're in contact with lift up and we've been kind of communicating back and forth with them on, on those needs. And they've assured us that they'll have plenty available on this Thursday and they reached out and worked. The Basalt Food Drive is coordinated from my understanding through Picken County and the Aspen Ski Company. And so they've been communicating on what their supply is versus what we have and to try to coordinate that. So folks don't get sent down to Carbondale and then not have something available. So sounds like they're in pretty good shape and they've been sharing numbers and updates fairly regularly with us.
I also received, it doesn't look like everybody received it. I received an update from the Aspen Community Foundation today. And in that they, they listed how they're spending their money, including the money we donated. So I just forwarded that on to everybody. So you can just get a sense of how Aspen Community Foundation is doling out that money. So that's good stuff.
And just real quick, when we sent those donations to both lift up and the Aspen Community Foundation earlier this week or yesterday, I guess, or maybe we sent them on Friday. We included a cover letter coming out of our emergency declaration about how this was an essential, essential service of the town based on the emergency declaration. And worded in a way that it may or may not qualify for reimbursement from FEMA. So we're setting the table to, to go after some of those reimbursements. It's just kind of a gray area because some of those aren't necessarily essential functions of the town, which is kind of the criteria for any reimbursements. So we're, we're trying to use the right terminology in the right format and include it in cover letters on any thing that you authorize payment on through this over the next, you know, however many months.
We'll also be putting, I assume we'll put this on our, our website. The state of Colorado just launched a new webpage that is kind of the one stop shop for if you need help. Here are your resources. And it's kind of like Erica, you know, type in your, your zip code and we'll tell you what rebates are available. That's kind of what they've done here is you type in your zip code and it lists all the organizations that are available. I looked at those, a couple of them. I mean, there's, seems like there's a few missing, but nonetheless it's a great resource. DOLA has also come out, Department of Local Affairs has also come out and with a map. And you can click on Garfield County and if you need help with rent, it tells you what organizations can help. And it, I think it just lists two in Garfield County Catholic Charities and Salvation Army, which probably isn't going to be much help for a lot of folks, but there are starting to be some more state resources available. And then one of the things that's on the top of my list is to really, is to sit down computer to computer or screen to screen with Andrea and, and better understand what, where our businesses are. I know she's been surveying them and I feel like she has a good understanding, but I don't really know. And so I just want to, that's my priority this next week is to really understand where our businesses are and what they're going to need. But we can kind of guess at what that is, but I'd like to know more. So anyway. Other thoughts, questions, concerns? Are you guys hearing anything from the public about, I don't know, things we can be doing differently or severe needs?
Oh, people are asking when the rec center is going to open again and I'm, I really have no idea, probably not soon, but everything should be ready to go. Once that decision is made, I would gather. I just wanted to add a little clarity around Marty's question about the advanced directives, if I could just briefly from VVH, a few years ago, they decided just to go with the basics. And so they're using a document from the Colorado Hospital Association called Your Right to Make Healthcare Decisions, which is a little softer approach than the five wishes. And there are several pages that explain all the necessary parts, but the last four pages are the actual advanced directive and medical durable power of attorney. It's also available in a Spanish version. So if anybody's interested in taking a peek at that, I can send you the URL. It's online.
Thanks, Lonnie.
Yep.
Okay.
Hey, Dan.
Yeah, Heather.
So there was a panelist that mentioned the region wide website, which is the Aspen to parachute through the community foundation. I don't know if we want to read that out loud. Those are the same resources we're listing on our neighborhood hero flyers that we're posting. So that would be a great website. That is kind of the collection. I don't know if you can see that or not.
Oh, here we go. Now I'm seeing it. Okay. I'm not sure if that's the same or not, but I'll take note of that.
I mean, Dan.
Yep.
Are we jumping on to totally different topics now? But like, is this our talk about the task force time right now? And then we're going to jump to something else.
Well, so we've, we've got the update from Jay. We've talked about the task force. That's sort of the update for coronavirus. And, and, and then we'll jump on to food security. So
So my two small thoughts on where we are is still, I'm so impressed by the fact that this is such a community driven, you know, volunteer led thing. And I appreciate everybody who's involved, including all of you who are involved. And I feel like I don't have time for it right now, but I, you know, that's why we're all here, right? It's awesome seeing everybody step up and do all that. I feel like maybe we could help with funneling donations toward, you know, one or a few groups. If that's appropriate, or at least encouraging people somehow. I looked around for sort of where to donate. And if I didn't have the knowledge of what we've talked about in our meetings, I wouldn't have really known about like La Medici and about the fact that Aspen Community Foundation is kind of being the aggregator and distributor of resources. Like that's really valuable to know. Cause I think a lot of people are going to get those checks and from the stimulus and feel like passing them on. And I feel like between the task force in an official capacity, I mean, if, if we don't feel comfortable on our website, putting a donation link and kind of narrowing it down for people a little bit, then surely the Facebook group or the website they have or whatever else they have. I looked around and I just found it surprisingly difficult to figure out like, who should I donate my stimulus check to?
Dan, I, I thought that it would be up there by now and I'm realizing that it's not, but as I mentioned last week, we plan to put up just a PDF that has those four or five resources. So we just have
Great. Awesome. I think people will be getting those checks. So I think the timing is really good to try to get people to be generous. And then advertising that like with anything. And then I just, I just, I guess I just want to have an ongoing like understanding of what do we feel like our role as the town is in the response to this? Cause I feel like we're right now, like I feel like our core mission is still providing our essential services, taking care of our own, you know, what the town has to provide because it's so critical. And I just get a little unclear when we start, like, how far do we step into, we're about to talk about food security. There's clear overlap with like our municipal zoning that we're going to talk about, but beyond that kind of stuff, I just want to be open minded to what is our role? Cause I don't think I have a really clear answer to that, other than as a connector and the leader of the task force. I think that's all incredible. But you know, we could be encouraged to take on a bigger role or a smaller role at any point in it. And there's all these other agencies and stuff. So I just want to, I'm not asking for an answer right now, but that's something that's just on my mind a lot is asking that question and thinking, what should the town be doing right now? And I don't really know exactly what the answer to that is still.
Well, I think what I will say is, you know, it's certainly, you know, PC, it was his vision that created the task force. And I think certainly for PC and probably for others, or Erica, correct me if I'm wrong. There is an intention to have something like a task force live on. But what does that look like? Obviously it's not going to look like it does right now. And PC and I started talking about that last night and I don't have any answers either, but I think that's something that we all need to think about is what role do we play? Does it look any different than what we're doing right now or not? But yeah, just so you know that that, that's also a question in my mind right now. And if anybody has any immediate thoughts, share them. Otherwise I'm sure we'll talk about it in the future.
Well, I have a good, I can chime in a little bit. I feel like it's a, the task force and it's strong, you know, being a town led, it's also an opportunity to kind of things might come up that need to be, not need to be vetted, but then we can weigh in on, okay, is there a town role or is this something that, yeah, this is great. We want it in our community. If you want the town to say, yes, we want this in our community, but it's a, the role of somebody else to really lead. And I think we'll get into it in the food security, but you know, on a call I was on last week and we, and Jay and Dan were as well. You know, somebody had said, well, we need somebody to coordinate all the conversation and kind of do like a regional RFTA for local food. And I don't know if the town, I don't think that's the role of the town of Carbondale. I think that's private entities who bring together their own three county group on local food. But we could be responsive and, you know, figure out ways that the town can tie into it or promote it in our town. So I think, but it's good. It feels like it's been really good during time like this to have this kind of framework where things like that can come through. And then we have town representation to identify what is really obvious that we should take on, or we bring it to you guys and say, okay, is this something the town takes on? And I think there'll be more of that as we move through, through this hole, especially if it's a really slow rollout of getting back to normal.
Yep. Other thoughts on that question? Okay. Grace and Diego, don't, don't hesitate to chime in. All right. Well, I know we, so I was going to move on to food security unless anybody else has anything. Go ahead, Luis.
Just one thing, and I don't know if this is the right area to bring this up or in terms of task force or the town, but so something I'd heard from a few folks about, I'm not going to name any names, but a business owner who had attended one of these protest rallies in Denver. And how this might apply in terms of somebody who runs a business and who's, has a very public facing business reopening when, you know, they were pretty well exposed to the possibly the virus. So I'm just curious if that's something, you know, the town can address the task force, you know, I, I haven't touched it at all, but I thought I'd bring it up in this arena just to get folks thoughts on it.
I'm not sure I understand that. Are you saying how, what do we do about a business that may open, but there may be?
So it's, I can email you and Jay about it and just maybe talk more, get into more details about the, this particular situation. But I think it's just concern from other residents about somebody who knowingly has exposed themselves to this. And then in another venue has a very public facing business, how that might then increase the risk of infection.
Okay.
Just a, a quick response to that, Luis. What we would do on that is work through the IMT, the county IMT and the county health department and ask them how they would recommend we handle that. If they think a business is unsafe, they've actually put together a little cease and desist order, which we can coordinate with them if we think something's either in violation of the law or unsafe and we'd work through them. That's essentially how the ice cream truck got kicked out of Garfield County, just for the, because the kids were swarming around it in all the communities and the county IMT came forward and basically issued a cease and desist for the ice cream truck. And we served it on them and the bell rang down the street. But you know, not exactly appropriate comparison, but that's how we would handle that if we're afraid of a specific issue, we'd work through that.
Great.
Just same thing. I understand Luis is the concerns people are expressing to him.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to food security. And I definitely want to set the stage because it's a, it's kind of like talking about climate change, you know, it's a, a little bit bigger than the town. But I added this last minute because there was, there, there's lots of things that the task force or various people associated with the task force want to discuss and advocate for with respect to food security. And and, and I tried to outline them in the email I sent to all of you. Some of whom we might be able to address tonight, but there was the specific need of, gosh, if we're going to, if we're going to change the trajectory of food production this season, it would be nice to have everybody have every tool at their disposal to make backyard gardens. And Steve Wilson brought some ideas forward of how we can further facilitate people building some of these. And so that's really the specific issue I want to talk about tonight. And to Erica's point or to Ben's point, whoever, also what involvement do we want? Because there are a lot of ideas out there. I feel like all those ideas are still ruminating around. And I don't really feel like there's a specific question before the town right now, other than those that I presented in the email tonight. So, um, and you should have received a memo from Mark Hamilton talking about, uh, the first one and whether or not, uh, we have the ability to prohibit, the prohibition of food growing infrastructure. Um, and Mark, it is, you know, typical legal fashion basically said, I don't think so. But anyway, so I was going to tackle these, uh, one at a time. For, I do want the board to ask any questions before we begin the discussion and then also just inform the panelists. We have, uh, Brian Alvarez, Terazas, Colin Quinn from the Eboard and Steve Wilson. If you want to speak, just, uh, raise your hand in the Zoom fashion. Okay. But before we go there, uh, anybody on the board have any questions or thoughts on what we're going to discuss? Like just the agenda, that is. Okay. Not seen anyone. So this first one, uh, my question was if allowed, do we want to pursue prohibiting the prohibition of food growing infrastructure similar to the way Colorado revised statute, yada, yada, yada prohibits the prohibitive prohibition of renewable energy systems? That has anybody had a chance to read Mark's memo? Okay, good. Any thoughts on this? I, the way I read Mark's memo was, um, I would be very cautious if you take any action. I don't necessarily think it's in the town's purview to take action on this. That's the way I read it. But anybody have any thoughts on this one? Ben?
I mean, I was just reading through, um, the other memo that had John's thoughts, John Laborne's in red on Marina's email. And in it, John Laborne says he's not aware of any HOA that restrict gardens. So I just want to make sure we have a problem that we're really got a specific use case that we're addressing before we spend the time trying, you know, if it's not going to have any impact, let's not waste our time.
Yeah, Steve, if you can chime in, um, I'd, I'd welcome it. Grace, Steve, you have your hands raised and I'm not sure what.
Steve should be unmuted, but, um.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, I've kind of been, as I, I looked at the PUD list and I've been calling around to some of them. I know that Soper's Town Homes has a prohibition on it. I know RBR requires approval and basically prohibits, but also controls all landscaping from a species aspect. And looking at the Crystal River HOA, it seems very likely that they would have that control too. I haven't been able to look at them all, but in, in my brief view, there is a lot of control that folks have. Uh, Wheel Circle has provisions allowing for specific types of, um, greenhouses, uh, but does control them generally. I don't know that, that I, you know, if we were looking at chicken coops or something like that, in addition to greenhouses, it might apply there. But greenhouses wouldn't be specific to wheel as far as I can tell.
And so Steve, our town attorney just sent us a memo, a memo just an hour or so ago, um, that essentially said, I think you'd be on shaky ground if you tried to, um, contest that HOAs uh, are allowed to prohibit those things or restrict them. So I wouldn't say that he's saying it's, it's impossible, but it's a pretty big fight, uh, or, or the risk of a lawsuit, I suppose. So he was discouraging us from taking any action. So I think Ben brings up a good point that, um, you know, we definitely want to know how, how much, i- is it really a big problem? Are there a lot of people? And so I think my suggestion is let's just hear from folks. And so we get a sense of how much food production is really being prevented from HOAs. That's my thought anyway. Lonnie and then Heather.
Go ahead, Heather.
Well, this will be easy because actually Lonnie, I was going to put you on the spot. So where we've run into it is, is in RVR. Um, and it's what we define as like food infrastructure. So, the, the whole greenhouse part, you know, having your own back out backyard greenhouse to, to do starts and things like that was, um, you know, where we ran into some barriers in RVR and some of it is just where you can put it in a side yard and, and things like that. And so I think Lonnie, you representing and really knowing pretty intimately, one of our bigger PUDs, you know, it'd be great to, to hear from you guys. Cause I think I certainly would rather see that movement, you know, from the ground up and some of these PUDs like considering and making those changes, um, themselves, right? Because it's an important priority to, to that particular community. But there, there are definitely barriers. I, I don't think necessarily to putting a raised tub in your, in your yard. But I think broader, like food infrastructure, um, there are definitely some, some PUD barriers right now in Carbonell for sure.
Yeah. Well, I can address the RVR piece. Obviously, you know, I, I know that pretty well. If the individual homeowner wishes to put in a raised garden, they certainly can. However, it needs to meet design criteria. So it has to be compatible with the overall look of the intended, um, River Valley Ranch appearance. Um, there's, you know, one of the big concerns is that anything that is golf course facing needs to be very mellow. Um, and that's a prior arrangement when things were, uh, approved for annexation here. Um, I know that Steve, who is three doors down from me, um, does have some uh, very sophisticated growing areas in his, uh, side yard there that, um, uh, look over the Crystal River. So I mean, certainly, um, it, it's not prohibited. It's just the manner in which they're designed. Um, might be a little more closely regulated where there's so much open space. Because you know, you have to remember as well that the owners here bought and paid certainly a premium for a certain ambiance and a certain feel for the place. And, um, you know, you expect to have that observed and supported by the HOA management. The other controlling factor or contributing factor I would say is that you can put in certainly a garden, however, it can't require any more irrigation that's already in place. Uh, because the system is, um, at max capacity, the turbines are running at max capacity, especially when you're pushing uphill towards Tick Ridge and Perry Ridge. So that's another, um, contributing factor to some of these decisions. And then, you know, the, the chicken coops and the farm animals, I'll just say loosely have not been, um, uh, approved because of the attraction to the predators that are here. I mean, I, I see them all the time. Um, you know, I got up at 2:00 AM as an example to let the dog out and there were five coyotes walking across the back lawn. So we had to wait. Um, certainly bears are here. When you consider the proximity to the Crystal River, it's a a pretty high traffic area for, um, cats. I've heard, you know, mountain lions out there calling. Um, and, and now that there's consideration or concern about wolves being reintroduced. It's like, oh gee. So you don't want to put any attractors here that would, um, potentially put the human population in peril, but certainly for food growth, for farming, for agriculture. You know, a sustainable garden, um, would, would be okay as long as it fell and met some of those or all of those criteria. Criteria really, excuse me. Did that answer the question at all, Marty?
Yeah. And well, I think that answered half this question.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a different question.
Go for it.
My question is Dan, um, and maybe we're going to get to this later on. What about community gardens? How many do they, do we have? Are they fully maxed out? Do we need to think about, uh, an additional one?
Wh- what I can tell you is, um, there's still some vacant plots open at Third Street Center. Uh, right now, or, or Bonnie Fisher, I don't know how we classify that. And whether or not we expand that or not, I mean, I would think we'd obviously want full capacity before we expand anywhere. I don't know if anybody's proposing that right now. Um, so that's not a very good answer to your question, but.
I have something. So maybe we also approach this in two ways because there are some neighborhoods that don't have an active HOA. And I know Steve mentioned Wheel Circle or I like, I know my neighborhood doesn't have an active HOA, but we have covenants. And this might be on the list of, um, you know, when we met with P and Z, Ben and I talked about reaching out to neighborhoods to, what is it relinquish their POD and go under town code? I'm not sure the word, the language. Um, and I definitely want to do that with our neighborhood. And I was talking, I was, we were looking at it more in the housing discussion of allowing ADUs. But maybe we add this to the pros list or just the informational list, or just another reason to take it on of, um, clarifying if, when you're under one code, then we have clearer regulations on what you can have in your neighborhood. Because I, I know there's lots of people in my neighborhood who don't know that they're on covenants that might be different than the town code and what's covered. So that could be on our outreach list. Um, but I think RVR is really different because they have an active HOA and there's a group to approve design guidelines. So, that might be a different nut to crack. If we crack it, I don't know.
Right. Well, might as well do that. And Steve, also with, with respect to, uh, the Colorado revised statutes, the way I understand it, and Jay, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but what our town attorney is saying, absent the state doing something like that with food infrastructure, to use Heather's term, I wouldn't suggest the town do anything. So we could, if we wanted to, we could advocate and lobby for the state to pass, uh, legislation that would do that. But then we're, we're asking the state to do something and it's not the town doing something. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, yeah, the, the issue on the statewide is Kiowa was put together to level the playing field on how HOAs are, are regulated. And the state's gone in two or three ways and said, hey, whether it's solar, renewable energy, we're going to overrule this and allow it at a legislative level from, from the state. That statewide would be an easy, um, not easy, but would be clearly legal. Within the municipal areas, it's just, there's no defined case law on this. It's a, it's a complete unknown. The only city to have passed an ordinance that we're aware of, which overruled, um, some PUD requirements or covenant requirements was in Denver, when they passed some legislation to deal with construction defects. Which is, you know, a little different issue and it had to do with a affordable housing goal. And that's really the only case out there where there's been a, or not case, but where there's been an ordinance passed on this. So the authority's not clear. Um, and if you wanted to go further on it, there'd have to be a fairly in-depth, um, legal analysis of it. That was Mark's two pages of saying, by the way, um, there's no clear authority to do this. And I, I think Steve had his hand up, um, too, for another comment.
Okay. Did, but I think Heather was in front of me and I don't know if you could still hear me at this point.
Yeah, yeah, you can. We can hear you Steve, but go for it.
Well, I'm, I appreciate you taking this seriously and looking into it with Mark. I've been working with Chip over at RDA, trying to bring this to the state level as well, kind of working both fronts at the same time. I, I've handed this off to bigger hands than mine on that regard. So I have no idea if that's happening. To me, if the town were willing to support the action at the state level, I'm sure that wouldn't hurt. Um, I don't know if the town would be willing to look at a recommendation to homeowners associations saying, we would appreciate it if you supported food infrastructure and you may not have rules specific to it. Lonnie, I know, hey neighbor, it feels weird that you're right over there, but also right here in my room. It's, um, it's very unclear how to deal with greenhouses in RVR. And I think that's evidenced pretty heavily by the fact that there are none. There's no clear prohibition. Um, you talked to John Plano and he says, as far as I'm concerned, as long as it's under 12 feet and 120 square feet, you meet setbacks, you're good to go. But then you try and talk to the homeowners association about it. And while I appreciate what you're talking about, the sensitivity towards the golf course. I think that you know, uh, my, in, in my particular, uh, ever growing experiment back there, um, you know, I, that's not golf course spacing. And so how do we encourage the folks who can do this responsibly to do it responsibly? And I think that's where I'd like to see the town advocate, at least to the other communities. Um, and if we had something like that, uh, you know, distribution becomes the issue, but that's not your problem. That's our problem on the private side. So if we had something for distribution, that was the town advocating for this being something that's considered. Um, I don't know how far that goes with our homeowners associations, but, um, I think any chink in the chain we can create is a step in the right direction. Oh, and Lonnie, to your recommendation with the turbines being running at max capacity, food production is two thirds less water consumption than lawn production. So I think we could turn those turbines off if everybody planted vegetables.
Heather?
Steve just stole my thunder.
Sorry.
I was going to talk about water and, you know, I mean, reframing that conversation. Envision RVR with the turf and all the right of ways as productive planting and exactly what Steve said. Think of that productivity and how much less water we would use. Uh, and, and so also the caveat to that is the Bonnie Fisher, um, community gardens. Love to actually talk as a group. You have it down on the list about, um, adding any additional community gardens. Certainly for me personally, and I know some other folks, one of the big challenges at Bonnie Fisher is water. Um, and so not having, uh, uh, pretty much a regular watering system is super, super challenging. So as a, you know, working parent to have to have a community garden that you pretty much have to visit every single day to water is really challenging. And, and I think it narrows the demographic of who can take advantage of some of those gardens. A, a fair amount just to, you know, like I said, a timing thing. So that may be one thing as we look at how the community gardens operate. You know, are they, are there ways to make those a bit more accessible, um, just by the nature of how we, uh, how we provide irrigation to those two cents on water.
Thanks, Heather. So I, I think Steve, to your point, and, and to circle it back to where Ben was in the beginning, I think if you, maybe you are the collector of issues because I know, I can say with fair amount of certainty that HOAs aren't necessarily looking for the town to tell them what to do or, or to suggest things. But if it turns out that there are a lot of people who are being prevented from things, I personally would be willing to try and help in some way. But again, I would want to know how big of an issue is it? And, uh, you know, what's possible. So maybe you can follow, we can, we can talk offline and, um, talk about what that looks like, but. Okay. So I was going to move on to number two, uh, cause I'm not seeing other, any other hands up. Steve has also put together a quick start guide to backyard gardens. Um, I don't think that's exactly what it's called, but I wanted to give you guys an understanding of what it was. And he's asked, uh, you know, could we essentially advertise that? And I, he's not promoting any business or anything, but could we promote that guide on our building department website so that someone who's looking into, you know, am I allowed to build a raised? Department website so that someone who's looking into, you know, am I allowed to build a raised garden would see this guide? Um, and that's the way I understand it, Steve. So correct me if I'm wrong, but. Uh, I guess my first question, Jay, I haven't asked you, or would we even be? Uh, technically able to do that? And if we could, is there any reason why we couldn't do that? Legally or?
I, I don't think there's any barrier to doing that.
I also haven't cleared this. Like this is me reading the code. In, in a bit of a vacuum, I would like to get Labor and Plano involved and certainly, I mean, I'm volunteering my time to create the diagram. I've. Made a stab at it, but. They certainly should bless this.
I'm seeing a bunch of nodding heads. I don't see any disagreement with that. Okay, Heather?
Ben, you can go first.
I was just giving a thumbs up.
Um, I personally love this. I think. I haven't necessarily maybe seen yours, Steve, unless I missed it in some of our back and forth, but. I think there's two things to that. So. And this is a big thing for me, right? So there's like. The, um, building code part of this, I'm supposed to put it this far away from my neighbor. I can raise it this high or, you know. Here's where it crosses the boundary and I might need some sort of permit. And then there's actually how to do this. So most of the people that I talk to, um, including someone that I'm in a very lengthy email dialogue with. Their greatest challenge are not our regulatory barriers. It's actually knowing how to grow vegetables. So how, how do you create the right soil conditions? How much sun do you need? How much do you water it like? And so a lot of people try and, and it just doesn't work. You know, they don't grow anything the first year and, and they give up. Many of us are transplants from lower elevations where things sure were easier to grow. There was a lot more, you know, sun. So I think. What would be great is if that, um. It kind of tackled both to a certain extent, Steve, where. It was, you know, what do I need to do from a technical perspective with the town, but then also like, what do I need to do literally? What should I direct? So what should I get sets? I mean, just like that whole tips and tricks version of this. Um, I think would go such a long way towards the advocacy of it. See, anyone I have talked to, to Ben's point. The issue is not that the towns' building codes have gotten in the way. It's that they're convinced they don't have a green thumb or they tried and they failed. Like it's, it's really all about, um, knowing. How to do it, how to get connected to like coaches. You know, they can help them and things like that. So that's sort of my two cents.
I'm test driving now is, um, I think we had a call, was it Friday, Dan? Um, where we kind of talked a little bit about this. And I reached out to, there's a couple of master gardeners around, but then there's also a Facebook page. Garfield County Master Gardeners. And so I've put a picture of my garden and the diagram of what I plant and. When and how I do it and ask for their input. Assuming that that is a good conversation, I'd love to advocate for them as kind of, I guess, they need for their master gardener's degree, some sort of. Volunteer hours and I sure think we could all put them to use. The other part of it would be, I'm working with another gardener, um. To put together kind of, uh, you know, if you had a sheet of plywood on the ground, a four by eight garden, what's your best yield and most like success? And so this way people can take that four by eight plan, which is super easy to build, you know, it's a couple of cuts on a five, on like a six by six from loaves, right? This is the kind of thing that can show up and you can do in a weekend. And then here's how you plant a four by eight garden for the maximum of success. And so we're trying to go through. Yes, that part of it. I mean, the problem is like, how many like. You talk to gardeners and, and the, the kind of plant geeks out there and they're like, well, if everybody's got zucchinis, is that really a good thing? And it's like, if we all feel successful at making food, that's a good thing. I mean, if we have to eat too much zucchini because everybody got really successful, they're all trying to trade zucchinis. That's a fantastic problem to have. Let's not get over. Like if everybody's growing the same stuff, is that a problem with diversity of diet? Like that's a question we can have once everybody's producing too much food.
Cool.
Okay. Going back to my list. So Steve, uh, I'd say just work with John and, uh, John and John. About getting that blessed and. Uh, Jay can communicate that the board doesn't have any problem with putting your start guide up there once it's ready. Good segue, Heather's comments into. Item number three, which is, do we want to consider allowing building code changes as proposed in the letter included below? Uh, and as I said, John Labor and had already weighed in. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't necessarily see. Anywhere where John was recommending a change or, or was comfortable with any changes. So I guess I'm, I'm looking to you to say, is there anything in particular you want? The board to weigh in on right now?
Um. So this is more of, uh, the building projects exempt from permit component of it. Uh, most of the stuff it seemed like he agreed with and upgrading that list of issues to include. You know, rather than shed, it's a greenhouse coop and those sorts of things that would also fall to make explicit. Where some of these structures can go. And he didn't seem to have a problem with a lot of that. It was more just. Clarification to make explicit language that is. Theoretically implicit. I think where it came up was in the fence section. So building projects exempt from permit in my mind contains a two foot fence requirement. Anything over two feet requires. A building permit. And I just can't imagine a 42 inch, you know, chicken wire fence to keep. Uh, you know, rabbits and what have you from eating your garden being something that needs to be a week long permit process to get. Especially when you can build a four foot retaining wall without a permit. So to me, getting a 42 inch fence. I mean, I don't know if it's on non-permanent foundations or something along those lines, but a two foot fence seemed like a barrier to garden creation. Um, and I was really advocating for, I can't find anywhere in the code where a 42 inch fence would be illegal. I think in the front yards, anywhere along the sides, obviously Lonnie, you gotta get homeowner approval. Um, you know, fences aren't just for everybody, but if you're, if you're not in one of these additionally regulated areas. Moving that height up to 42 inches for, I mean, yeah, if you're pouring foundations, I appreciate that you're, you're demarking property lines with these things and without a surveyor. You could be screwing up your neighbor's property and, and that's not what we're looking to do. Uh, but maybe a non-permanent foundation or something along those lines. Could be advocated for in a greater than two foot fence, but not greater than 42 inches.
Steve, my only thoughts of that is John Plano is incredibly reasonable. And I think, you know, with building codes. You have to sort of, you're sort of protecting against what if? Um, but I think if someone came to John and said, John, this is what I'm thinking about doing. It's, you know, I'm gonna. Staple chicken wire to a couple of, uh, stakes to keep my rabbits in or whatever. I guess is he'd be pretty flexible with that. But it's good to have, it's good to have the code to force them to call John Plano. Um, so that he could offer that flexibility. So that's my thought. I, I, I guess I go back to what. Maybe it was Heather who said, I, I don't necessarily think these are really preventing folks from doing things and. Uh, and I don't even think you'd be talking about a week long permit. I think John. Would understand how simple it was and. And be flexible, but I don't know if other people have thoughts.
Just to that one quick thing. I think Plano puts his neck out in his reasonableness from time to time. And I, I, I don't know that he should have to.
Hmm, that's fair.
I'm.
I see.
Go ahead, Ben.
Go ahead, Ben.
Um, I mean, I'm still just where I was before. I'm still looking for evidence that this is prohibiting anybody from doing anything. And I, I get it that like we could, this is very detailed too. I feel like we're getting like down to a level of minutia in this right now that I just didn't expect to go all the way into. I mean, I feel like we could sweep these changes up into the next code revision, but it doesn't feel like this is the urgent thing that needs to happen right now to suddenly make. Backyard gardening expanding Carbondale. The fence permanent process, but if it's part of a bigger revision or if it's urgent, fine, but it doesn't feel. Like this is the breakthrough to me.
Yeah, I mean, I, Steve, I guess that's sort of my question to, to you and or. I think Dan said Colin was on too. I mean. I don't know that the E board has had people parade in front, like we are debating rabbits, uh, so because it came up. And it, um, has clearly been. An issue that's been brought before us, um, and has opened up a really healthy debate. Uh, about what, um, animal production really means. We haven't had. That same fervor, right? Come in front of us around. Backyard vegetable gardening. And so. Uh, the, to me, those tools around that quick guide of how to do it and. You know, how to be successful in vegetable gardening. These other things, I think if. We are seeing them as barriers, like it's a list to Ben's point, it's pretty detailed. We'd want to probably kick you guys to P and Z to go through that really clear list and. Um, work through that dialogue, I would think. Um, they're going to be the first line of defense for us to. You know, vet some of those. Really detailed code and have John and John there and, and make sure we look at unintended consequences. But I just, in terms of like what to do right now, and I mean. Right now, people are already buying it out, right? I have seen. A clear and significant difference in how fast, uh, seeds flew off the shelf this year. Everywhere from city market to ACE to the co-op. I mean, cleaned out. So the Victoria garden movement, it, it hit the stage and everybody's giving it a shot. I think the, so those pieces of like the code, I don't get the sense that all of a sudden we have people coming before us say, I want to plant these seeds now. Turns out I can't do it because you have this fence in your code and this, that. So. I, I'm not saying we shouldn't look at them in the future, but I think to. Ben's point, we haven't necessarily heard that as the, the immediate barrier to. A food security issue, or let's say I want to address it myself in the next six months. Um, so I support that we look at them in the future and, and kick some of these suggestions to P and Z to look at. But I certainly would want to see more of the, uh, um, like encouragement. And the how to guide be our right now, focus on that, get it done, get people connected to master gardeners right now in the next two months. Um, that's the only way they're, they're. Addressing this for this season. So. Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda, I'm kinda with Ben. I, I support it, but I don't think that that's our like. First and foremost barrier for people. Um, not pursuing this level of, of gardening.
Okay, I, I guess my intent there was, and I'm really happy anecdotally to hear that those seeds are flying off the shelves. But if we're. Fundamentally, I think what we see is a lot of complaint, complaint based change. And we're not getting in front of it as much. And so if all of these things are going to be happening. And we're going to address it when there are complaints. It would be, I, I was just trying to think it through from the beginning. So that when these things get out into the world and everybody's going to be out there tearing up their yards because everybody bought all the seeds, right? So we're going to see a lot more of this and trying to give them the tools they need to do it right. Is, is really what I'm trying to do. And so if you're telling me the evidence is there that people are going to go. Rogue and start growing their own food and like, this is going to be a thing. That's really exciting to hear and I'm going to work with the master gardeners. I'm doing that right now. I want to put together this four by eight panel of garden. But I'm concerned that it will create future complaints that you will have to address then.
Thanks, Steve.
If you're saying that's when we want to address them, I'm more than happy to let that be the case.
Thanks, Steve Collins had his hand up, so go for it, Colin.
Sorry, Colin.
No worries, Steve. Uh, thanks, Dan, and, um. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Great. Um, yeah, Steve and I had a chance to touch base yesterday along with a couple of the E board members. I think where we're coming from and I, I completely support almost everything Steve outlined. He did a lot of quality work. I agree with Ben and Heather, like. Things that we talked about on the E board and with Steve, and Steve has certainly not ignored these are. How to get people, how to inform people where they can buy starters. How to let people know how they can grow gardens, exactly what Heather was talking about. Um, and less so kind of the zoning restrictions. That being said. We also talked about balancing the short-term response, which I think is promoting those. Opportunities to grow food and maybe people, more people will grow food and that's a good thing with the kind of the longer term resilience. And maybe that's what, what Steve's kind of zoning restrictions are partially addressing. Um, so a lot of what I was going to say has already been said, but I, I also want to take this opportunity just to ask if there's opportunities. To advertise like the Danny Lion Day farmers that are going to be out there selling stuff or the. CRM S plant sale and things like that, just to inform people about how they can get plants, how they can. Grow gardens and things like that. I think that, that could help serve the immediate need. Thanks, Jay. I'll go back on mute.
Colin, before you do, is that? Are you asking? Can the town have a role in that? Or is that just a suggestion that, hey, we should take advantage? The community should take advantage of those opportunities to promote.
Well, I think the E board can have a role. You know, we're kind of limited in the decisions we can make by. Putting advertisements in the paper. Um, and we could use some of our E board budget to do that, or just not promoting any, any one organization, but just kind of listing all the plant sales we know, for example. And things like that. So yes, in that, in that way, I think. The town can have a role in informing people without obviously. Um, stepping over any boundaries by supporting an organization that, you know, Jay would have to weigh in on.
And Colin, let me ask you a question while we, how about, you on, um. And you and I've had a little bit of email exchange, but. What role do you see the E board playing in, in this food security discussion? From this point forward?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, Dan. I really like, and I'm not, I think what Steve has been doing is great and he's, he's been leading really well and he brought us into the conversation and has been very inclusive of having everyone's voice. So I first want to commend Steve on that. I think the E board kind of brings this, this longer term resilience outlook of, okay. That's great that we can have these. They're not great, but this may be an opportunity. Um, where people are focused on food security. So what does that look like in the, in the long term if something like? A climate event. Causes another shortage. Can we be more prepared? Do we need to focus on promoting CSAs? How can we do that at the town? How can we do that as an E board? You know, that's a lot. A lot of what, a lot of that's done on the private sector, nonprofit side, as I mentioned here. So I think this is kind of the start of the conversation. Of that longer term resilience, but also balancing that with the immediate need which we're talking about right now. And I don't think I'm saying anything others don't necessarily agree with. I just think we're approaching it from different angles. But I would be curious if the. Order trustees kind of supports using this as an opportunity for long-term resilience. And promoting some of these things we're doing now to be best practices for the future.
Now.
Opaque, yeah, yeah, Dan, I know that's kind of a vague answer, but. So the answer is, I don't know, but there's, that's kind of where I'm going.
Okay, and I wasn't expecting like a, a 10-point plan. Uh, I was just curious to. So.
Yeah.
Thanks. Uh, Erica and then Luis.
Uh, thanks Colin and also thanks Steve for bringing all this stuff to us. Um. So when I was researching rabbit regulations, um, you know, and I shared Austin, Texas and their regulations. A little bit and I've since, you know, done more research and they do have a local food. Policy council, I think. And, um. I'm not saying that we create another council, but it may be. If this continues to raise and we have interest, maybe it's a, not to put more work on the E board, but a subcommittee of the E board. To take this. And then the other impressive part was on their government website, they do have. Really clear links to what is allowed in the city for small animals. What's allowed for gardens? And then they have those exact. You know, really well laid out. Here are resources and here are how tos. Here's what grows here. And then connects people to the resources without. Necessarily advocating the businesses. I think it'd be great if the. If the chamber does have chamber members who after, who offer those kind of, will get you set up with your home garden services that they also. Articulate that and highlight that. Um, so I think we can look to other communities for how they've promoted it without us having to do it all. Um, but I just wanted to share since I was on their page recently and I did send those to Jay. It's just a. Summary, it's really similar to the quick start guide of just, here's what you can do in town, in the city limits and here's. What your restrictions are and requirements are.
Luis?
Sorry, no, I didn't have anything to add, Dan.
Oh, okay. Okay. The last one, you know, Steve is a little bit, uh, you know, I'll, the only person we can really tell who, what to do is Jay. Um, and he's usually telling us what to do. But then Parks and Rec staff reports to Jay. Um, but I did think it was worthy of a discussion and Marty, you even kind of asked this question. You know, do we wanna look at, um, developing more resources? There was a, uh, I don't remember who in the food security group mentioned the idea of having a, a tool library, which I guess means, you know, you know, an opportunity for people to borrow gardening tools. So do we want that? You know, that's really a Parks and Rec decision. And only if they needed a bunch of money would they come to the board. But I guess I just, I just put it on there 'cause I know it was a, a discussion topic. So Steve or Colin, I don't know if you have any thoughts or anybody. Anybody has any thoughts on these or Jay, maybe you know if, if we've, if our staff has had discussions with the community or not. So Marty?
Most of the tool libraries I've heard of have actually been run out of libraries. Yeah, and the same way you would borrow a book or DVD or CD, you could borrow a tool. And that would be something to just to go along with that. If you wanna set up a guide or books, um, you know, how to garden in Carbondale. That might be a good resource to do it. County Extension Agent. Down there, you could have your master gardeners, um, giving classes or discussions or answering questions. But just a thought, I have heard of tool libraries before, but like I said, usually it was done through a library. I, I think Parks and Rec, well, the rec center being closed, maybe have more now, but I think they have enough to do. And especially in the, you know, April to September, October period. When maybe not this year, but as a rule, there are tons of events going on and programs that they have to supervise. But that might be a natural fit for the library.
Thanks, Marty. Heather and then Ben?
I mean, I, I think back to what I was saying before, I, I think we have some infrastructure in place that Parks and Rec, uh, already relies on a lot of volunteers to execute and if that group of people just could be built upon, I think that would be fantastic. Um, again, you know, Bonnie Fisher, um, certainly has space. We have the water infrastructure there again in, in Spigots as it exists right now. There's a tool shed there. I'm, I'm assuming we're meaning like tool library, like, like my, you know, hoe and shovel. Yeah, okay. So, you know, they have the shed there, anyone who's there, you don't have to bring your tools back and forth. Everything is there. You can't check them out if, if, you know, you don't have a plot there. I think that's an interesting thing. I would honestly, out of the task force, I think what would be really amazing is to keep the one hundred neighborhoods that we created, um, in place. And there's, you know, neighborhood conversation tools, like apps that are out there now that, you know, if now I had everyone's email of the fifty homes that, you know, are in my neighborhood, I have a rototiller, will travel, like will lend, you know. Um, so I think that like a lot of things, it would be so much more successful to kind of build on some of the infrastructure that's here already and in place. And then just add more resources to it. And, and so Steve, I guess that's like part of a big message maybe to you is, yeah, let, like, let's go to Parks and Rec, but not with new thing, but rather with what's already here and how can this whole group and the task force and the crisis in place right now build on good stuff that's already here and make it better, bigger, stronger, faster. I think that's a song. So like, I, I guess that would be part of my message, 'cause I, I think my concern is that task force kind of starts shooting off in, in new directions, right? Versus build on what's already here. Same with Colin, some of the like long-term food security, bigger ideas. How do you do it on what's already here? How do you go to sustainable settings and say, what if you had a place in town that was year-round that you can sell and build a bigger and better CSA? Like, so I think that that's a, uh, a big part of, part of my message. And I think you guys are on board with that. And I just wanna say like, I support that. I don't necessarily support like new thing, trying to create new thing. If that makes sense, not being super clear, but.
Thanks, Heather. Ben and then Erica, did you have your hand up too? Okay, so Ben, then Erica and then Colin.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. I mean, I agree Heather with what you said. I think that actually does make a lot of sense that we build on what we've been doing. It's not a new thing. I was also reminded, Erica, I'm glad you mentioned your rabbit research, 'cause I was thinking about how, when you presented that to us. And I think Heather and others in the E-Board, I think a lot of people pointed out that this goal is embedded deeply in our climate action plan, our comp plan. Like food security, local food production is nothing new for this town to be prioritizing. So what I'm, I totally agree with where Colin was going of like, do we wanna use this kind of rally around the crisis and the sense of urgency here to put more effort into this? And I think the effort, the answer to that's yes. But it does feel like it's not the, it doesn't feel like there are barriers in the way or even kind of relatively feasible things the town could do quickly that are gonna make the breakthrough with this, like for this growing season, right? And that's what we're talking about with the task force and the current crisis. So, um, it doesn't feel right to me to be at this level of detail right now for us to be debating a gardening tool library, which I've never heard of before, and how high a fence can be around a garden, which I've never heard of before. I feel like if this is something we wanna do, then let's do it the way that we normally do things, which might be slower than some people like, but it's very thoughtful and it goes through a process. And it's like, if one of our goals for the year is to really push on this, I'm all for it. But I don't feel like there's really obvious low-hanging fruit here where we can make some quick changes that are gonna really increase food production this growing season. So I just kind of, just tactics and strategies and timing and whether this fits under the emergency kind of focus or to me, this feels like a little bit longer term, but with a sense of urgency.
Thanks, Ben. Erica and then Colin.
Um, I am wondering if there's one thing, this is for Jay and Heather probably is, is there anything we should do in the near term at Bonnie Fisher to make it that irrigating infrastructure that would make that better to get those plots filled? Um, and make the existing plot owners or renters, however that works, more productive? Is there anything we can do as a town or?
I mean, I'll, I'll let Jay jump in too. I, I wouldn't wanna use my use case as kind of a single motivation. I think, uh, you know, quick user poll of the other folks that are out there, their mailing list, who's had plots in the past. You know, why'd you give it up? Kind of thing. And, um, you know, and then with Parks and Rec and, and Eric and his team and the volunteers that run it, just what are they here? Uh, whether it's official or unofficial or, um, that, that, to me, that'd be one of the first places is, you know, what, what are they hearing as to why it's not full? Why don't we have a waiting list and that kind of thing?
Yeah, I, I think Elizabeth Cammick could tell us really quickly on that. The base infrastructure there has all been, you know, improved the lines and the, the pump station and stuff. I'm not sure why we went with the system we did for the individual plots. And I think what Eric spoke before, the reason why the plots weren't full right now, more dealt with the lack of one-on-one contact with people to, um, who usually come in and sign up for plots. Um, that it was more just the, the nature of the issues we're dealing with right now than an institutional issue. But I could have Eric check with Elizabeth on that.
So maybe if there are plots available, then that could be part of the advertising that Colin was talking about as well through, with the E-Board or from the town of, here's where you can get plant starters. By the way, these plots are available. Contact Elizabeth, that kind of thing.
Thanks, Erica. Uh, Colin and then Steve.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. I'll be real brief and going back to Heather's point about not necessarily bringing in new things. There has been an idea kind of circulated around for a while on the board about having, um, you know, a place where farmers can come and sell their food on a more regular basis than, um, the farmer's market and maybe even grow food and have a community kitchen. And I think, you know, that, that would be served by like the nonprofit or private sector. And I know like Mana Foods talked about that. So go, again, what's the role of the town? Maybe we're just making sure there aren't any barriers and thinking about how we wanna promote local organizations and things like that. But a lot of it is gonna certainly need to come from what's already there. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Colin. Steve?
Uh, yeah, um. So Heather, I appreciate you attributing this idea to me on the, um, tool library. I, I don't know where that came from in our meeting. I, I think that what you're identifying though is maybe a lack of leadership on the food security side of things. And I, I don't know who to talk to about that. But I, I do feel like we're, you know, running around like a herd of cats, as it were. And so the question I have is, you know, you say, look to what we have. Is, is there, and this is my ignorance, 'cause I'm just some guy who thought gardening was cool. Do we have a list of those resources somewhere where we can put that together? Like if we're working with what we have. And, and part of that is town assets, right? Where do those live?
I, I bet that's, uh, Eric or somebody in Parks and Rec can, can, uh, I'm not sure if it's a easily emailable list, but I'm sure we could put together a list of all the town assets. Uh, I don't think that'd be a problem.
Is that somebody I could reach out to and help organize?
Well, I think you could reach out to Eric and say, can you give me this list? I don't think he's gonna, and, and also.
I don't mean like put the tools in order. I mean like organize the list.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Or maybe that's Jamie, but I would start with Eric. Uh, yeah, I would just start with Eric, our Parks and Rec Director. Uh, Marty?
Yeah, I just have, um, one thing. This isn't relative to the gardens. This is just in general. Uh, today is the seventy-fifth anniversary Holocaust Remembrance Day. And I just think we should note that. And tomorrow is the fiftieth anniversary of Earth Day. And I think we should note that as well.
Yep. Thanks, Marty. So I think, uh, I think we've come to some good, uh, resolution on, on what to do next. And I think we've opened the door for further discussion, but I think as, as has been mentioned in uh, previous comments, I do think the town is sort of looking, not sort of, uh, looking for the food community to gather together, um, identify a strategic vision, you know, using Colin's idea of uh, leveraging this crisis right now to really act on food security. Uh, and whether that's the E-Board or other organizations, I, I think the town is here to help in any way we can, but it's this isn't gonna be a town-led effort, um, is what I'm hearing. And I think that's just kind of how we operate. So, but I really appreciate Steve has put, as you guys can all kind of tell, Steve's put an enormous amount of effort into this. Uh, and I really wanted to, um, address these issues so that we can act as, as quickly as we can as a community. So I appreciate Steve's efforts and any other closing thoughts before we wrap up this topic? Okay, seen done. Thank you, Steve and Colin for joining us. And, uh, that's actually the last item on our agenda tonight. So any other comments from the trustees?
I mean, there's a big announcement, right? That we're getting by email right now. Are we gonna talk about that at all?
That, that is on the agenda for next week. Um, we have a, a full agenda next week, but, um, Kurt Wilson has accepted our offer, um, to be the new police chief, um, for the town of Carbondale. Um, you'll be, um, reviewing that at your meeting, um, next week as a, as a approval step in that process. We're very excited about him accepting the offer. It looks like it's gonna be a smooth transition. He's working carefully with the police department already and I look for him starting on the first of June. So should be a seamless transition and, um, it was really helpful, the, both the community support on this, the, uh, um, community panels, the board's input. Um, we had four great candidates, all who could have done a good job for the town. So I'm, I'm grateful to be at, we're in the process. First time I've hired a department head during a pandemic, so it's been an interesting process. Thank you.
Okay. Smiley have anything to add? Okay. All right, Jay, any, any other closing thoughts?
Just a relatively full agenda and then starting next month, advisory boards will be back in play. Kay said it, we'll be setting up Zoom, um, webinar-based meetings for those. And our goal is to get re-engaged with all those different boards and get them back, um, working on town business. So, um, I think it was good to take a pause, but it's time to get them back going and get staff engaged and the community engaged as we settle into what may be a little bit new normal for a while. Um, so that's all coming up. Thank you.
And Jay, you're thinking that, uh, still right now, all of our Board of Trustee meetings in May will be Zoom?
At this point, I think we need to wait and see where the orders go in terms of groups of ten. But no matter what, if we're gonna have a public hearing, there's a good chance we're gonna have more than ten people appear. So we'll, we'll gauge that based on health orders, but at this point I anticipate we're still on this platform for a while.
Okay. All right. Well, good night, everybody. Maybe after next week's meeting, we can set up a Zoom drink.
The city managers and it turned into like a COVID nineteen two-hour update. It really sucked.
Walk around town, knock on doors and say hi.